I'd like to call the Plan Commission meeting to order on Tuesday, January 26, 2021 at 5:31 PM. Janelle, can you please take roll call?
Burtle.
Here.
Baker. Scott's here. Shumway.
Here.
Bell.
Here.
And Gutzmer.
Here.
Okay, comments, correspondence, and concerns from the public. I will read the handful of correspondence we received that does not have to do with any agenda items tonight. The rest of those I will read when we get to the public hearing. This is from Mary Vakheim. "Good morning. I live in Sister Bluff Estates and have a concern about our lovely town. I am worried that the amount of building and commercializing that is going on will, quite frankly, ruin the peaceful and beautiful atmosphere we have always enjoyed. I wish I would have expressed this concern earlier before the awful hotel was constructed. Please slow this expansion down. It feels as if there is no longer a slow, thoughtful village plan being followed, and it could destroy Sister Bay. Please contact me if you have any questions." This is from Maureen Buchholz. "Sister Bay has become a circus. Too much development by far, and this would just be another misconceived project. Enough already." This is pertaining to the proposal from Al Goki behind the Sister Bay Yacht Club. The next one is from Stephanie Youssef. "No more condos. Stop approving these projects. Be held accountable. As an employee who works in Sister Bay, who drives an hour each way to serve folks, stop. We cannot even house the foreign employees we are grateful to employ. We have very limited hours this past summer due to not having employable workers. Think future, think Door County culture, because this is just, is just not it." And then we received one from Steve Etau. "Dear Plan Commission members, I am opposed to the 18-20 unit condo boutique hotel proposed by developer Al Goki for Maple Street in Sister Bay. The hotel, as proposed, will be a vacation rentals by owner VRBO and an Airbnb. This means that there will likely be different renters in each unit every week. There will be no onsite complex manager, and each of the units will be managed by the individual offsite unit owners who quite likely don't live in Sister Bay. My fear is that this proposed complex will become an unsupervised party house with many noise and public disturbance problems from unruly residents. Once it's built, there will be no way to regulate what goes on in this project. Sister Bay has no police force and does not even have a constable. How will the inevitable, inevitable problems be handled? The county sheriff's department is already spread thin in the summer months and will soon tire of addressing problems at this project. The developer, once the units are sold, will have no further responsibility for the hotel. The village needs to come to grips with the concepts of density and scale. How many people can our finite village land accommodate? On many summer weekends, I believe we have already exceeded the capacity of our existing roads and parking capacity. In that regard, each condo unit of the proposed condo project should have two parking spaces. Where will the parking facility for this project be? Finally, what is the master plan for Sister Bay when it comes to more condos? Will condos be built until there is simply no more land available? I believe that quality of life in Sister Bay has already deteriorated. The village needs to plan with the end in mind and not just allow any project that creates tax revenue. Let's not sell the remaining Sister Bay ambiance for tax revenue. Please turn this proposed project down." Is there anybody who is calling in or zooming in that would like to speak to the Plan Commission on a non-agenda issue? Nothing, Bo?
Sorry, I was muted. I don't have anything.
Okay. All right, approval of the agenda. Item number three is going to be tabled until next month. They did not meet the criteria for square footage, and so Bo has contacted them, and they are going to resubmit. So if there's a motion to approve as amended, I would entertain that.
I so move.
Motion by Gutzmer.
I'll second it, Denise.
Second by Baker. All in favor respond with an "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Approval of the minute says published. Does anybody have any comments, corrections on last month's meeting?
I'll make the motion, Denise. I found nothing wrong with it.
Motion by Baker. Second, for me. Second by Marge. All in favor respond with an "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, item number one. Public hearing on a request from representatives of the Charles and Catherine Alexson Trust to authorize the creation and recording of a CSM that splits parcel number... Oh, I'm hearing somebody's microphone.
I know, I'm going through.
1810006312842C4, which has been assigned an address of 2612 Peterson Court into two lots. Do you like to give any background on this?
Yes, so at the previous Plan Commission meeting, Plan Commission members received a set of plans for this property. It is a CSM for the parcel number which was signed. It is going to be two R1 single-family residential lots. Did receive comments and correspondence regarding deed restrictions. I just wanted to update the Plan Commission to make them aware. That is not something the village takes into account. That is something that the property owner would have to deal with, with the sellers, so we can still move ahead and proceed with a public hearing and a recommendation to approve if, if that is what the Plan Commission would just to do, so.
Okay, at 5:38, I'll open the public hearing. I will read the one letter that was received. "I am the owner of record of the parcel of real estate commonly described as 10606 Westwood Drive, Sister Bay. It is west of and adjacent to the parcel described in the petition. The only purpose for the petition is to divide the tract in two so that one dwelling for private residents may be placed on each. The deed to this tract is subject to the restrictions in the deed recorded January 2, 1963, Volume 143 of Records, page 244, reciting, 'The tract herein conveyed is restricted to having not more than one dwelling for private residential purposes constructed thereon, etc.' Therefore, I object to the granting of this petition and request that the commission deny the request to split the parcel, commonly described as 2612 Peterson Court into two lots.'" Roland Litterst. I'm sure I butchered that name. So as Bo stated, that is out of the Plan Commission and the Village Board's purview. That would be an argument to be had between the association and the owners of the property for them to work out.
The last name is Litterst, and he's a retired attorney from the state of Illinois. Don't restrictive covenants run with the land indefinitely?
I don't know. It's not something that the village deals with very often. So just because we grant it, or if we would grant it, that is something that the association has to either sue or talk to the owners of that property, and they would fight that out amongst themselves. We have nothing to do with covenants.
Correct.
I, I'm not even aware. Maybe Bo can answer this. Is that lot a member of Bay Shore Estates?
I don't believe it is. I think that that's the, the references for a different deed restriction, but most likely between the seller and the purchaser.
So Denise, there would be no association involved?
No, it's just between the two private parties.
Okay, I thought it was part of that, so I was mistaken.
I don't believe.
Still not, not the Plan Commission or the Village Board's place to, to get involved in that dispute.
Correct.
So is there anybody in our audience tonight that would like to speak for or against this?
I did not receive any messages for this one.
Oh, I think Al Strack has his hand up. Okay.
Yes, we did send in a thing, but it was late.
Yeah, today.
Later, earlier this afternoon, but it was after the 3 o'clock cutoff time. We don't really have any problem with it if it's...
Where we live.
Yeah, we live at 2621 Woodland Drive. We're, our backyard would abut these properties, and we don't really have any real concerns as long as there's single-family residences. However, I would be concerned if they were going to be used as Airbnbs without an owner on, on site.
We don't. How do you prevent that? Well, unfortunately, when our past governor was in office, they restricted any municipality from interfering, and I believe that there was a court case that determined that if it is in a single-family residential district, that the municipality would not be able to deny somebody using it for transient rentals.
For commercial purposes, in effect?
Correct.
Well, I can object to that, but I mean...
We can't do it.
Yeah. Is that the plan for these, or are they going to be single-family residences?
Bo, do you have the answer to that?
Sorry, I was messaging someone. Can you repeat that?
Could the Alexons answer if it's going to be for single family residence, or is it going to be used as an Airbnb, or?
I haven't heard anything regarding an Airbnb.
As a single-family residence. However, a single-family residence, transient lodging is not, not considered a residential use. So if it says for residential purposes only, unfortunately, the courts are very divided in that, and they often have ruled in favor of the fact that transient rental, which could also be considered month-to-month rental, is a residential use. So it's, it's a very gray area, and we can only operate under the confines that we have under our zoning ordinance.
Well, a lot of, a lot of people, or a lot of opinions, and I, I would expect Rod might, Litterst might have more to say on that. A lot of people consider it to be commercial use if the owner is not on site. And I would certainly agree with that, because I would think it'd be like the other, the similar, the one on Maple Road where if the owner's not there, and you have constant changing of... It's going to be a noise and trash and all that kind of potential.
But we have no control over that.
We have no control over that. I wouldn't object to it. I mean, other than, I would like to know what, how that's going to be used.
Okay. Are the Alexons with, with us tonight?
Yes, we're here. We're, we're selling one, we want to divide it, and we've got a purchase agreement for someone to buy the one lot, and I believe they're just buying a home to build it and live there, as far as I know.
And, and yours also is the same, you plan on living there?
Or keeping?
We, we may, or we may be selling that lot. Our plans were to, our original plans were to retire there, but we're not sure that that's going to happen, so we have the other lot up for sale, too.
So, so you may end up renting it out.
Oh, no.
No.
Just vacant land.
Okay, we have no problems then.
Don't cave with us. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this?
Yes.
Hey, can we have your name, please?
Yes, Karen Weiss.
Okay.
And I'm on my phone. I hope it stays connected. I am concerned that 18 units is too big.
Excuse me, sorry, Karen, that's for a different agenda item that's next, but I will put you on the list to speak when that one comes up.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, back to William. There may be some confusion. Bay Shore Estates is this whole area. The Bay Shore Estates Association is a, a group that anybody in the Bay Shore Estates area is eligible to join. Does that make sense?
Just a question or clarification. Is Peterson Court a part of Bay Shore Estates?
We don't know.
I think it is.
Yes, I'm, I'm sure it is.
It's Phil Myers.
Sorry, sir, could I have your name, please?
William Meyer.
Thank you.
Yes. The Alexon property is part of Bay Shore Estates.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak for or against?
I don't see any other messages.
Okay.
Are we, are we allowed to speak?
This is regarding the Alexon CSM.
Yes.
Yep, you can. I just need your name.
Richard and Carolyn Aren't were the ones that want to purchase the lot.
The East lot.
The, from the Alexons. It's for a single-family dwelling just under 1,900 square feet. It's being done by vans, lumber.
For a permanent resident.
For a permanent residence. No rentals, no nothing.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, with none being heard at 5:49, I will close the public hearing. The Plan Commission have any questions? Janelle, do you have a motion written?
Yeah. Plan Commission recommends that the Village Board approve the certified survey map in quote CSM that was submitted by representatives of the Charles and Catherine Alexson Trust to authorize the creation and recording of a CSM that splits parcel number 1810006312842C4, which has been assigned an address of 2612 Peterson Court into two lots as presented.
Somebody care to make that motion?
I'd make a motion.
Motion by Shumway?
I'll second it.
Second by Bell. All those in favor respond with an "aye." Aye. Opposed? Carried. Item number two. Public hearing on Lance and Bridget Crane's request for a conditional use permit which will allow a residential condominium project to be constructed on the property located at 10607 Little Sister Road, 10611 Little Sister Road, and 10620 Little Sister Road.
Okay, just a quick update, because busy Zoom meeting. What I would like to do, I've been sending messages out consistently through the chat. If you do wish to speak for the public hearing for this agenda item, please message me your name in the chat, and I will write a list in order. That way we can do that. If you're on a phone and you're unable to type, we'll wait till the end after everyone on the Zoom call has spoke, and then people on the phone will be given an opportunity to speak for the agenda item. This is something that was presented at the last meeting for a condominium, condominium development. They are asking for a conditional use permit on what is commonly referred to as the Fred and Fuzzy property in the Little Sister Resort. The representatives are available, and they have made some changes to their plans since the last meeting, and I think they would like to do a short presentation before the public hearing opens.
Yeah. You...
Thank you.
I was going to ask you to mute somebody.
Doing my best.
Does the Delirious Group care to take us through the presentation, please? And will you be sharing this? Bo, will you be sharing your screen, or will Delirious be doing it?
I will clear my screen to make it easier.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, great. Well, I can start out by introducing myself. My name is Jim Delirious. I am president of Delirious Construction. Just a little bit about our company. We are three generations, 75 years in construction, and we've been building in Door County, numerous areas of Door County for three generations as well. Our homes and our projects are known for quality and our attention to details. Some of you are probably familiar with our projects. I'd also like to introduce Anaj Rastogi with Well Street Advisors. He is an associate of mine.
Hey, thanks, Jim. I just wanted to introduce myself. I've worked with Jim and other developers and owners over the last couple of years with a focus in historic redevelopment and community redevelopment. Just recently, we worked together on a project in Green Bay to redevelop a 101-year-old school and preserve kind of that historic community and build some townhomes around there to kind of redevelop a vacant historic building as well as vacant block in Green Bay. So have a very good working relationship with the Delirious Crew and really excited about this project with them. So, Bo, if you want, I can kind of start leading us through the next couple of slides here. So we'll just kind of give a project summary, dive into the zoning, talk about some community benefits that we see. Jim can walk you through the revised plans and designs, and then we wanted to just talk briefly about the timeline and then open it up to Q and A. We'd be happy to answer any questions. So, the overall project on the site, you know, this, this piece of land and this property, we understand is very special to Door County and especially Sister Bay residents. And when we've kind of been working over the last six months on this development, we saw that this is primarily a quiet residential neighborhood, and we'd like to bring it back to being a quiet residential neighborhood and a four-season neighborhood. So really, our concept and plan is it's one condo plot that stretches over eight acres with 18 residences. Primarily, these would be single-family lake cottage homes. We're going to have three or more designs that we'll present to you today. There's 16 homes on an inland parcel and two homes on a waterside parcel. Overall, they're about 2,300 square feet per home, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, and two-car garages. When we take a look at the site plan that Jim will present, you'll see that over 70, about 71% of the condo plat, plot remains a green space. So we're trying to be very, you know, cognizant of just nature in that area and make it fit with the existing neighborhood. So we're going to get landscape design that's respectful to the woodland environment that's already there. Also, we would, we'll, we will like to have water access for a condominium residence through the Egress path on the south side of the waterside parcel, and then also for the condominium residence, we'd allow for watercraft storage, which would really be more non-motorized things such as paddleboards and kayaks. So we can go to the next slide. At the, at the last meeting, we noticed that there were quite a bit of questions around zoning and fitting to the zoning, so we want to address some of that here and just make sure we're kind of on the right path. Currently, it's zoned as B1 General Business District, and our request, like Bo said, is for conditional use under residential condominium, and the residential condominium is subject to the R2 code, the R2 multifamily residence code. So within that R2 code, we studied that a little bit more per the commentary from the last meeting, and we see that the unit densities per the code is supposed to be six units per acre. Currently, with 18 units over eight acres, we're at a two-and-a-quarter units per acre, so we're well below the unit densities that's in the R2 code. Also, within the code, it's 900 square feet for one-bedroom dwell, uh, one-bedroom dwellings, 1,000 square foot for two bedrooms, 1,200 square feet for three bedrooms as a requirements, and we will be at 2,300 square feet for three bedrooms. So we're, you know, really trying to make this a low-density development and allow for very nice homes on that inland parcel. There's also garages that are addressed per the code that, that no more than 30% of the front facade is garages on a multifamily structure. We've talked to Bo and Denise about this extensively, and we want to be, of course, abide by the code and then also just be respectful of the aesthetics of all these homes. We'll follow the setbacks that are in there with front setbacks of 60 feet from center line right of way, 40 feet from edge of non-public street, and then 30 feet from rear property line. One of the topics that really came up at the last meeting was we only had two sort of concept plans for the, for the homes, and so in this meet, for this presentation, we've done three. So just to show that, again, these are all concept drawings, but just showing some diversity so that no two adjacent dwelling units look identical. Just a little bit of kind of what we're seeing as community benefits of this development. We've seen that this neighborhood is a predominantly residential, and we saw that Fred and Fuzzy was the only commercial business with heavy traffic and congestion that was being brought into this primarily residential neighborhood. We talked to Fred and Fuzzy, and we learned that on average, there are about 180 vehicles coming into the Pebble Beach area every day during the summer season due to Fred and Fuzzy's. With this development, we're expecting that really that average would be 36 cars per day, so greatly reducing the amount of traffic on these small streets. Furthermore, we talked to Fred and Fuzzy's, and, you know, on a, on a busy summer day, they really saw 600 to 700 patrons daily, and really with 18 homes, we're predicting that'd be more like 70 to 80 people per day that are either using the public beach or kind of walking around. So we're really trying to bring this, overall, the message I can convey is trying to bring this back to a low-density residential neighborhood that's quiet. So that would be our, our, you know, our goal here. We can go to the next slide, Bo. Jim, I'll kind of let you talk about the site plan changes.
Sure, thanks, Anaj. So this site plan concept represents our proposed 18 condo project, 18-unit condo project. And if you have some familiar familiarity with the site, and I'm assuming many folks on the call do, there's, there's quite a bit of grade change. As you go through units one through nine, there's quite a bit of fall in the natural contours of the landscape down to the water. So as we're working on the, developing this site concept, we decided that it'd be best to, to play with those natural contours and utilize those contours to emphasize some of our architectural elements. We decided that it'd be best to to play with those natural contours and utilize those contours to emphasize some of our architectural elements. So if you start at uh unit one entering off of Gulf Road, um. It's hard to see a little bit from the site plan, but each of these units are strategically placed in a way. That they allow privacy to either the back deck or the back patio area. And I could describe it saying uh, units one through four are are at grade sites because there's not much pitch. Units five through nine um have anywhere from about three to five feet of fall. So they would allow for uh some additional exposed windows uh out of the back. Um, a little bit more expansive glass and. As we carry on to the water fa- waterside facing units. We've intentionally left a a spread on the lower units. So that we can provide as many views as possible uh to the water. We feel that. Units eleven through sixteen are gonna, are gonna be able to have some pretty nice water views. We accommodated the site plan by originally we started out with one entry point. We added an additional entry and or exit. Uh, we added a cul-de-sac to allow for emergency accessibility. Um, the, the overall plan of the site is to take advantage of the. The natural landscape that's that's native to this area. So we want it to feel very natural, somewhat park-like. And we really want the these art, the architectural value of these homes just to to blend into the landscape. So landscape is a, a big part of this that we're keeping in mind. You also notice that there is uh off to the right side of your screen, you'll notice that there's a paved pathway. That will allow residents to access Pebble Beach.
I think one other thing, Jim, I just wanted to add. As this is a concept plan, some of these units may be staggered, you know, backwards and forwards. But we can't get to that specifics until a civil engineer is really engaged. So they kind of look. In line right now, but that won't, that won't necessarily be the case.
That, that's a good point, Anaj. There will, there will certainly be some movement as we get into the civil work.
Just so you know, I think Denise has a question.
Okay.
Um, you talked about units one through four are at grade, five through nine are at a three to five foot fall. Um, what are eleven through sixteen and what is ten?
Uh, so. Eleven, so, okay, I'll start at ten, Denise. That's a good question. So ten is, is at, is, is at grades. That would be a unit on a slab, so there'd be no exposed windows out of the lower level.
Okay.
Unit eleven. Unit eleven through fourteen, well. Eleven through thirteen will actually allow for a full walkout of the lower level, out of the basement level. Fourteen and fifteen will allow for exposed windows. And unit sixteen. Um, that's up in the air. I have to do some more work with uh civil to better understand. But I believe that's probably end up at at grade, a slab on grade.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet. All right, so, so Bo, Bo, Bo just pulled up some of our uh conceptual design or design concepts and. We have several variations, uh, three primary variations. We actually added one since the last meeting. They all range from just over. Um, well, I'll, I'll get to the floor plans in a minute, so I won't, I won't get ahead of myself. The architecture itself is, is fairly traditional. We've added just some, some subtle modern flair. To the design. Um, our intent again is to be consistent with the landscape. Try to keep our, our materials uh fairly subtle uh with, with earth tones as colors. So it sort of blends into the surroundings. You see a little bit of variation between A and B. Um, we have varying deck sizes. And if you, if you kind of look at these elevations and revert back to that site plan. You, you can see how each neighboring deck or patio areas is sort of um blocked or purposely positioned. So that you have some, some privacy uh at, at the rear of the home. You can move on to the next slide, Bo, if you could. Thank you. So, uh, home C is, is the last of the variations. And actually, that's the variation that we, that we added. Um, as I, as I walked through that site plan, the units and, and answered Denise's question. Uh, some of the units will have that full walkout, some will have exposed windows or others will be agreed. Just depending on how the, the civil works out. So again, I just want to uh. Preface that these, these are concepts, so um there will be some subtle, subtle changes.
And Jim.
Jim?
Yes.
So, and I appreciate you uh listening to us um from last month and adding um a, a concept C. Um, but if units one through, and I know that this is, is concept right now. And that once you actually start the civil engineering, things will get tweaked. You'll know exactly better what kind of grades you're dealing with. And what home can go where. But if one through four are all at grade. You only show one, you know, home A that doesn't have a walkout. So would you not have to create? Other options um for at grade?
You, you're absolutely correct, niece. So ultimately, um, each, each one of these ho- homes, when it's done. When our full set of uh built set drawings is, is done and the drawings that we would submit to the village. Um, each, each home is going to be represented just a little bit differently. Because as I would lay out with civil, if it ends up being a four-foot frost wall, just a slab on grade. If we were looking at an example, this uh home C, the rear elevation. It would just be a, there would be no deck. It would just be a, a at-grade patio right out to the yard. So, um.
Okay, so something that you're well aware of that um at some point in time, if we move forward, that. You will address, okay?
Absolutely, but it is a good clarification, Denise.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Then one other thing I just wanted to point out that you and I kind of took as comments from either Bo and Denise was that. The, from, when you look at from, I think is its sister, from the Little Sister Road. Um, it won't be, you know, I kind of want to distinguish in the front and rear and kind of how we use those words. Of what actually shows from the road, because I think one of the things was some of the backs of these homes look very nice and are very different. Um, and we were just saying how those might be the ones that you can see. From Little Sister Road.
Yeah, yeah, um. That might be me getting a little bit in the weeds on this, but typically when we build a home that uh views the water. Uh, what conventionally someone would think of as the backside is actually referred to the, the front side, the side that faces the water. So uh, many of these architectural renderings that show the full walkout and the additional stone. Uh, on, on the lower side, that, those are the homes that you're primarily gonna see. Uh, from, from Little, Little Sister versus Gulf Road. Is that, is that the clarification you were looking for, Anaj?
Yeah, I just, yep.
Okay. Okay, so this is probably gonna be a little bit hard for everybody to see, but if you. Maybe just scroll back for one second, if you could. I just want to point out, um, we show the variations of, of the floor plans. And uh, both's home, both homes, A and B. Are a, a two-bedroom concept. Uh, he does offer a, a, an area. Um, so more of an option room or an office. Uh, all of the designs have. Very expansive spaces, so they have um very adequate sized kitchens. Uh, you can just tell by the furnishings uh that the great rooms are, 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 are sizable. I mean, um. The, the biggest variation would be C, uh, C is, has a, a, a third bedroom. So, um, but in terms of square footage. They're ranging from the low two thousands up to about twenty, uh, twenty-one hundred square feet. Some, if they have a basement, would have an option to uh finish off the basement uh and, and, and some will not. The garages, as it's designed right now, are inadequate enough size that you would be able to get. Two full-size vehicles along with storage for some kayaks and bicycles, whatever the owner may choose. Uh, uh, Anaj and I thought that was very important in keeping up sort of a, a quiet neighborhood and, and friendly to the environment. Just trying to keep uh cars and, and some of those other items out of view.
Jim, before we move forward. I, I have a question back on the site plan.
Okay.
I'm sorry, which is on page twenty-seven. Um, so unit eighteen is obviously uh the Crane's personal home. And is unit seventeen? Uh, Grandma's old stone house?
You are correct, Denise. Um, it, we would really like to preserve that if at all possible.
Okay, so then right above unit seventeen, what is that gray square?
I believe the gray square, I believe there's a garage that sits there now.
Yep, there is.
Yeah.
Right. And that, and that will remain.
As of right now, that was the intent.
I don't recollect it. Um, I can't picture it. Um. Is it in good shape? Is it dilapidated? Will you, you know, re-site it or paint it or whatever? To, to blend in, you know, with either unit seventeen or other?
Our, our objective is that everything on this site is, is gonna be, you know, either refreshed. And overall, it's gonna be very well maintained.
Okay.
Denise, I just have a question because I need to, to look in the tax records. Who is Grandma?
Oh, it's old, it, it's just always been called Grandma's House for forever. Grandma's Stone House. Um, I would, I would imagine that it was um one of the original owners. I don't know if it was either the Andersons is what I'm presuming, but that's all I've ever known it as, is Grandma's House.
I would just like to point out that Sister Bluff, if you'll remember and recall, if you go in through the development to the very end. There's the original estate home, which is now condominiums, and it doesn't look similar to what is, what the rest of the units look like. But it's a beautiful preservation of another stone house. On a condominium development.
Yep. Okay, Jim, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so our, our really last slide that represents concept, uh, just gives you a couple of. Interior shots, some uh photos that are inspirations that we've used in our design concept. That represent similarities to appearance of the interior.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe just, there's just one last slide about timing, but.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we understand that this is kind of the digital, conti- conditional use request. We're looking for um just an understanding of what, which conditions would be put on the development. And then as we move on, it's really kind of more in March, April, May, where we get into board approval or plan, plan approval and permitting. So, uh, we understand that and um kind of thanks for your time.
Well, just, just to clarify what you're talking about, Anaj, is um. So we're having the public hearing tonight. We will listen to all testimony. Um, I have been upfront from the beginning on the sequence of events and the timing of everything. And um because um this encompasses um. A large amount of property and um it, because it is a conditional use. That I did not want to rush the plan commission um to make suggestions. On what any conditions we would put on this project for its approval. So um, some board members may or may not have um some ideas that they want to throw out. At the end of the public hearing tonight, when the plan commission is only um talking about this project. But we will come back in February and we will sit around the table and talk about all of those. And then in March, we would um do a development agreement. And April um have um plan commission possibly approve it, which then goes to the board in May.
Okay, no, we appreciate that. Thank you.
So you are finished with your presentation, so I may continue um with the, all the public comment that we've received?
Yes.
Okay. Once again, there are quite a few letters. This is from the Downey family of one oh six eight three Little Sister Road. And they would like to register their support for the Crane's reference change of use application for the Little Sister Resort. We strongly feel that the B one conditional use residential condominium is a win for the village of Sister Bay. And a win for the residential community surrounding the Little Sister Resort. Why is the B one conditional use change a win for the village of Sister Bay and a win for the residential community? Consider the following. The completed project would add considerable tax revenue over the existing use. Incremental tax revenue is a win for the village. The current use has long ignored but obvious traffic safety issues. The congestion of cars and pedestrians sharing a narrow road each with a sense of entitlement is a safety risk. That the village has ignored for far too long. On busy weekends, a thousand people a day are either being shuttled in golf carts, is that even legal? Or wandering on foot and across a public road, which they treat as a pedestrian path. By allowing these conditions, the village is putting Sister Bay visitors' safety at risk. And Sister Bay taxpayers' checkbooks at litigation risk. Eliminating safety risks is a win for the village and a win for the residential community. The current use has another long ignored but obvious safety issue. Down-road residents on Gulf Lane and Little Sister Road have reduced access to timely emergency medical fire. And other safety services, all of which are among the most fundamental services vested with the village. Again, the remote parking and thereby throngs of visitors making their way to Fred and Fuzzy's on a public road. Make it for unacceptable road congestion and access to those emergency services that the village has pledged to its residents. Improving emergency safety services is a win for the village and a win for the residential community. Fred and Fuzzy's is a destination restaurant, which provides no indirect benefit to the other Sister Bay downtown businesses. Wholly dependent on tourism dollars for their livelihoods. If you dine in downtown Sister Bay, you will likely spend additional time and money in downtown Sister Bay. Ice cream, t-shirts and artwork are purchased by downtown Sister Bay visitors and not Fred and Fuzzy's visitors. Encouraging visitors to the commercial downtown of Sister Bay, rather than redirecting them out of the commercial downtown, is a win for the village. Returning to the Little Sister Resort to a lower density commercial activity is consistent with its historical use. For the far majority of the Little Sister Resort's tenure, it was a destination for a handful, not thousands of visitors. The requested B one conditional use change for residential condominiums is consistent with the Little Sister Resort's historical impact. On the neighborhood and a win for the residential community. The next letter is from Paul and Kathy Luber. As longstanding homeowners on Little Sister Road, my wife Kathy and I are writing in support for the condominium proposal from Lance and Bridget Crane. We believe the project will be very, will be a very nice change and improvement for the area. As it will enhance the aesthetics of Little Sister Road and dramatically reduce traffic. congestion, and noise in the area. That said, we are hopeful that the Sister Bay Planning Commission approves the proposed Crane condominium development at your upcoming meeting." Next letter is from Nick and Kathy Garrett. "As homeowners of 10721 and 10723 Little Sister Road, we are writing you today in support of B1 conditional use residential condominium proposal. The residential condominium development would reduce traffic and noise on Little Sister Road. We feel that by having individually-owned homes on Little Sister Road, it would be in keeping with the residential feel of the rest of the neighborhood." This is from John Stolenberg. "I am writing to express my family's support of Lance and Bridget Crane's condominium proposal for 10607, 10611, and 10620 Little Sister Road in Sister Bay. We urge the Planning Commission to support a variance from B1 conditional use to a residential condominium use. The Crane's plan is the best use of the former resort land in our estimation. The plan calls for 14 to 16 high-quality homes, which would coincide with the present residential neighborhood. The past years have been overwhelming with noise, traffic, and unrestricted parking onto the road. There was no relief from the local authorities. It just kept growing unwieldily. The Crane's project not only enhances the neighborhood, but the Sister Bay tax base as well. We think this type of development is in keeping with the quality atmosphere of Sister Bay and Door County. It will give future generations more equality of life for both residents and tourists." This is from Mike Hoffman. "We are writing you in support of the Crane development plans for the former Little Sister Resort property." This is from Terry Cooper. "I am writing my concerns as a citizen, not as a land trust employee. I had a chance to review the Little Sister proposed development plan and wanted to express a concern that it appears they are not providing access for the majority of their proposed residences to the waterfront in their development. I am concerned that this will put increased and undue pressure on Pebble Beach and the Village of Sister Bay to provide for water access by the proposed residences. As we all know, the long-term plans for Pebble Beach are low-impact recreational activities, and there is a limited beachfront that is already in high demand by the public. It seems the developers are not providing appropriate water access on their site for residences and instead would be using Pebble Beach and creating even more long-term management challenges for the Village of Sister Bay. I am concerned that they make some accommodation in their plans to provide their residences waterfront access within their development project." Excuse me. This is from Steven Etta. "I am opposed to the Cove at Pebble Beach condo project as proposed. The project as presented would be located right next to the iconic Pebble Beach natural area that the public worked so hard to preserve. The people, through generous donations, managed to come up with over $500,000 in a couple of weeks to help make the purchase of this adjacent property possible. Now, a developer wants special treatment to put 18 condo units right next to the iconic beach natural area. The project site, as I understand it, is located in a B1 business district. A residential condo project is not a business. Therefore, a conditional use permit would be required to override the existing zoning. Why in the world would you do that? Additionally, the project does not meet the Village of Sister Bay's 20,000-square-foot of land requirement for each single-family home that is to be built. The developer, Crane, only proposes to provide 11,000 square feet of land for each residential unit. The proposed residential project in a B1 business district calls for simply too much density right next to the iconic Pebble Beach natural area. Please turn down this proposal that only serves to enrich the developer at the expense of people." The next letter is from Laura and Eric Schultz. "Regarding Lance and Bridget Crane's request for granting of a conditional use permit that will allow the construction of a residential condominium project on the property located at the addresses that we previously stated, with assigned parcel numbers as we previously stated, respectively, we would like to express our objection to the construction of 18 single-family homes. We recently purchased our home at 10652 Little Sister Road this past year and have thoroughly enjoyed the neighborhood. Our strong opinion is that the proposal to add 18 single-family homes onto the property is far too dense for the neighborhood. The homes will seemingly be on top of one another without nearly enough open space. We plan to attend the Zoom meeting scheduled at 5:30 on January 26. It is our sincere hope that the proposed plan will be significantly scaled back so that our new neighborhood is not negatively impacted by the addition of 18 new homes." This letter is from Elizabeth Voat. "Little Sister Bay, what a gem of a place. My family has treasured being there for more than 60 years and has seen constant change in that time. The sleepy, family-style Little Sister Resort began to stir with barn dances in the 70s and fish boils in the 80s. Fred and Fuzzy's brought a new level of activity to the bay in the 90s with live music, outdoor bars, cooking, dining, and droves of customers coming by water and land. It was a charming and memorable spot, a waterfront destination so beloved by many. Fred and Fuzzy's had a unique business model. Its logistics were complex but successful, and it made the resort viable. This success also made the resort disruptive. Cars blocked the streets, parked everywhere, boats powered and moored around the bay, many visitors loudly claiming it their own. Shuttles constantly ran food, supplies, and customers to the waterfront and back. The noise could be heard around the bay and odors wafted. Ever-changing, in the last 150 years, this bay went from wild timberland to host a fishing business, dairy farm, residential homes, and a resort. Now, Little Sister Resort, after being on the market for years, has been purchased with a different business plan. The proposal to build 14 single-family homes on the parcels on Little Sister Road seeks to remove the commercial hub of activity away from the center of the bay, redefining it as a residential area. Why not? This development would give the old resort property a fresh beginning. The charms of Little Sister Bay would still be accessible to all thanks to Sister Bay's acquisition of Pebble Beach. The Village of Sister Bay would have assured of property tax revenues from newly constructed condominium homes. A new start, a new phase in Little Sister Bay with consistent and compatible land use. Yes, I write in support of the change of use to B1 conditional use residential condominium and urge you to support this change as well." Okay, that's the first batch. Let me find the other ones on my computer. This is from Ingrid Christensen and John Krensmann. "We are residents on Little Sister Bay. We write in support of the Lance Crane vision of the resort property redevelopment. It will be busy and tax-paying, but maintaining the residential character of our little bay. I hope you will support the plan. They will be good citizens of the community. I know, and we will all be lucky to have them." This is from Greg and Suzie Sunstrom. "After looking at the Crane's plans, I have asked about drainage issues, which they are addressing with delirs. We like the idea of several smaller or individual townhomes rather than one large building. With that said, Suzie and I are in favor of the conditional use for residential condominium on what was Little Sister Resort and Fred and Fuzzy's waterfront bar and grill in the Village of Sister Bay." This is from Ellen and Doug Roberts. "My husband and I purchased a property at 10631 Little Sister Road last fall. We plan to participate on the Zoom meetings this evening, but wanted to ask a few questions and state our concerns. One, we are concerned about having 16 houses built inland of Little Sister Road. The proposed 11,000-square-foot lots are significantly smaller than the stated 20,000-square-foot village requirement. In our opinion, a concession of 15,000 to 17,000 square feet per home would be more acceptable. Two, we are concerned about added traffic in that area as well. How will this be controlled? Stop sign, speed bumps? And three, will the existing barn and small cottages be cleared from that area? We hope to learn more tonight." This is from Catherine Falconer. "My family owns one of the properties on Lindem Lane, adjacent to the Fred and Fuzzy's property. I wanted to write a short note indicating that my family supports the Cranes in their plans for the Fred and Fuzzy's property and would very much like to see them as owners." This is from JT and Jenny, no last name. "My wife and I own a home on Little Sister Road near the former Fred and Fuzzy site. We are writing to express to the village that we do not have reason to oppose the Crane's proposed development. Like so many others, we loved Fred and Fuzzy's. It was a beloved spot to visit, and we will miss it dearly. However, we sympathize with the need to retire and know that any new commercial development in the spot might not be able to fill those shoes. There were many benefits to living near such an iconic Door County destination. But with that proximity came the downsides of heavy vehicular traffic on a narrow road and loud trucks idling most days of the week along Little Sister Road, making it at times dangerous for both cars and pedestrians. We feel that a residential development will create a more peaceful and safe environment for those that live and visit the area." This is from Tava Wilson and family. "First, thank you for all the time and attention you take in creating an amazing vision for the Village of Sister Bay. The various transformations have clearly taken a tremendous amount of time and consideration on your part. Please know that we are so very grateful to you. I, along with my family members, Robert Wilson, Elsa Christensen-Wilson, Luke Robert Wilson, and Theodore B.A.R.A.C., am writing in support of changing the zoning of what was formerly the Little Sister Resort and Fred and Fuzzy's to a B1 conditional use residential condominium. We live across the bay from this proposed development and are pleased to imagine the bay continuing to be peaceful and calm while welcoming more residents. Our property has been in our family since 1915 on the Wilson side, my father, and since the 1850s on the Christensen-Lindem side, my mother. As family units, we have worked to keep the family property just that and to maintain a space of quaint, calm serenity in beautiful Door County. We feel confident that the Crane's proposed development will continue this feel of quaint serenity along with adding value to Sister Bay in tax revenue and adding to the overall appeal and attractiveness of the Village of Sister Bay. We hope you will vote to support the change of zoning to B1 conditional use residential condominium." This is from Barbara Ziegler. "It is in the best interest of the neighborhood of Little Sister Road and the surrounding area to make this new development have a lesser environmental impact. Fred and Fuzzy's might have been a fun restaurant, but the traffic was a constant hazard. Most folks ambled in the road as if it were a private sidewalk leading to Fred and Fuzzy's, not really paying attention to the fact it was a public roadway. When the new development is built, it will fit in well, conforming to the idea that Little Sister Bay is a pristine environment and does not need overcrowding. The land trust at Pebble Beach is a testament to how special this area is to the public who raised thousands of dollars to keep it protected. The Cove will have less traffic, bring in tax revenue, and provide housing for those who highly value the area they are investing in. Please know that I believe the Cranes will take pride in their development." This is from Robert Ziegler. "Please let the village board know that Barb and Robert Ziegler of 10727 Little Sister Road support the Cove at Pebble Beach plan as the Cranes presented. We think that will enhance the residential area and eliminate the very dangerous and nerve-wracking traffic of pedestrians, cars, and food trucks, et cetera, that has clogged our road for many years." And the last one that I have is from Julie Christensen and Carl Dietz. "We are in support of the Crane's plan, though we do wish there wouldn't be quite so many homes built. I am a homeowner from across the bay and also a condo owner at Bay Ridge Condos. We hope you will vote in favor of the Crane's proposal." So with... Janelle, did you keep track at all to make sure that I had them all?
Yeah, the only one that I don't think you read was Nick and Catherine Garrett's.
Okay, can you read that one then?
Sure.
Was that in the packet or the email that you sent me this afternoon?
That was in the packet.
Oh.
I think you read that one, Denise.
Then you've got all of them.
Okay. Okay, at this time, I would like to open it up to anybody who is Zooming or calling in to speak for or against this project. And Beau is going to be in charge. If you would like to speak and you haven't messaged him already that you would like to speak, please do that. And he is going to take them in order as he receives those requests.
Correct, and just to note also, if you are calling on the phone, please wait until the end. I'm going to go through the list of people that have sent me a message and then open it up to people on the phone because I know that they do not have an option to chat. So first up is Stolen Work.
Yes, Joellen, Stolen Work.
Since I wrote my letter, Joellen would like to speak, please, from 10673 Little Sister Road.
You know, it's so exciting to hear all of these wonderful letters supporting the Crane project. The planning, I think, is perfect. It's been done tastefully. And I think it definitely will be a benefit to our neighborhood, our village. You know, time does not stand still. Fuzzy and the resort have had their time, and it just was not working anymore. It was hard to do a living with the cottages. So I'm so happy that we have something as nice planned to take advantage of that beautiful space in Sister Bay. Thank you.
I'd just like to add also, it appears the Cranes have the financing for this, which is most important. Thank you.
Sorry about that, I was muted. Next is Hoffman.
Hi, did you mean Kathy?
Correct.
Okay, hi, I'm Kathy Hoffman. Our family home is at 10703 Little Sister Road. And I just mirror many of the comments of the people that wrote in. I'm very much in support of a residential solution for this amazing property.
Thanks.
And I I would add, in addition to the problem the problems on the road with traffic and pedestrians not understanding where they where they are going, or that it's actually a public road. There was a lot of disruption on the water as well. Fred and Fuzzy's attracted a high volume of boaters that typically would not have been in the bay necessarily, except that they would go there to dine and drink at Fred and Fuzzy's and then drive their boats and sometimes not very responsibly. So, for example, for kayakers, paddle boarding, swimming, it was actually, it really changed the bay to be somewhat of an unsafe area. I also think that it brought a lot of pressure onto Pebble Beach. And I think that the residential solution is going to solve a lot of those problems. And I mirror the Stolen Works viewpoint that this is a really wonderful solution for this pretty historic property.
Okay. Nissa Norton.
Oh, there we go, I'm unmuted. So I own property at 10640 Little Sister Road, otherwise known as it used to be 418 Little Sister Resort when my Little Sister Road, I mean, when my grandparents built it after they sold the resort to the Luber family. Denise, you mentioned Grandma's house. I can give you a little history. That was actually my dad Bruce, his grandma's, so Winfield's mom's house. So that it always had a little sign on the mailbox that said, or just painted on there that said Grandma's House, and the name stuck. So that's kind of how it always stuck with that name. That little storage building that was mentioned that you weren't sure about, that will realistically need at minimum new siding, if not knocked down. It's it's older. It's right next door and I think was used mainly as a restaurant storage during winter, like chairs and stuff like that. I do have some questions about the little pathway on the side that leads down to the beach. Is that specifically done that way to lead to the pathway in the woods that leads to actual Pebble Beach that was owned by the Luber family? Because that's, there's there's a little pathway in the woods that would match up perfectly with that, that goes directly to Pebble Beach. So does that have direct straight water access? Or is that just made that way to direct any resident to the original part of Pebble Beach? Yeah, no problem.
I believe it goes all the way down to the water.
Okay. My other question is, are the Cranes planning on blocking off their personal property in that part of the beach from any other residents? Because if it is now one parcel is residential, wouldn't that entire beach area belong to the residents that live there? So if by blocking off part of the beach for their personal area, would that be breaking how it would be used as one parcel? My, another question I have is realistically doing any kind of basements on any houses that would be built there would involve a lot of blasting. All of the stone fence work that's there and all was from my family literally picking rocks out of the field where the golf courses, when it was a working farm. You dig down not even a quarter of an inch and you hit rocks. So any kind of basement would involve major blasting. So my concern is how does that affect anyone who owns property? Because I know when sewer and water went through on Little Sister, you could hear it anywhere on the road, and it would make houses shake the entire road. So it wasn't like small blasting, they were, there's major rocks in that area. It's one giant rock.
Nissa?
Yep.
I'd like to address these when I know I have an answer for you, so I don't.
Oh, I know, I know. I know, it's more me spewing out questions that I have that I know that you may not honestly be able to answer now, but something to...
Sure, no, I do have an answer for that. And quite a few years ago, we incorporated into the village zoning code that if there is going to be any blasting, that a company has to be hired and videotaped within so many radius around the project to make sure that there is no damage done to any existing homes or structures. And then it's videotaped after the fact also.
Okay.
But one of, and I when I met with Anaj the other day, I informed him that one of the conditions that I plan on placing on this project is that there is no blasting. We are next to Pebble Beach, which is ridges and swales. And we are on the Niagara escarpment. And so if they had to do anything, they're going to have to peel it.
Okay. My my last big thing is when it comes to the complaints of traffic on the road. Having grown up and spent my entire childhood on that road, after my husband and I bought our property, we noticed actually less traffic past the resort than I ever saw growing up. Where it used to be people were walking up and down the street constantly, all the way down to the end of Little Sister. It it actually seemed to finally stop at the resort. The resort being 100 years, there's there's always been traffic there. That's not a new thing. I can pretty much guarantee almost every family that owns property on there was not there before the resort or before my ancestors owned it. So they bought it knowing that it was there. Personally, I'm against currently how it is. I I feel like it's a way for somebody to change the system where they can have their giant residential home that they wanted and put some houses there to make it look good so they can still have their giant home. That's why my questions of how much they're going to block it off exist. So I'm personally against it, and so is my husband. Thank you. I'll stop badly now.
I'm sorry, can you please spell your first and last name for me, Nissa?
Sure, it's N I S S A. My last name is N O R T O N. My maiden name is Anderson. My family started the resort.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay, next, all I have is Karen. I believe she spoke on the wrong agenda item before. Okay, we'll move on, and if she comes back on, we can put her on the next one on the list. Kathy Luber.
Hi, my husband Paul and I own 10709 Little Sister Road, and we are in support of the Crane's project. We like the aesthetics of the project and think it's an improvement and a nice fit for both the road and the bay. We're happy with the reduced traffic and congestion and the idea that it might become a quieter neighborhood. We also think it's a positive for the little, the Sister Bay tax base. Thank you.
Okay, next is Doug and Ellen Roberts.
Hello there, good evening. I just wanted to add that Doug and I are in support of the change to residential use that the Cranes are submitting here for the Cove. Our biggest concern is really just how crowded it appears those 16 homes will be in the inland area. And I was wondering if there's been any consideration of reducing the number in that section.
18.
Well, yes, there's there's two on the water area, and then there's 16 up in the inland area. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that is what we are, that's mainly what we're concerned about, our properties at 10631 Little Sister Road. But really just buying that this last fall and walking that street, there aren't, I mean, homes are spaced out at least those 20,000 square feet. So that to have, you know, all of that large home on top of large home, I think, just changes the aesthetic of that area. But overall, we are in favor of the change to residential use. We would just like some modification to it. Do you want to say anything else?
No, just just some reduction. All those big houses on 11,000 square feet, that's just too much. I think if it's reduced, it would be perfect.
Thank you.
Next is Louise Hausen. You're muted, by the way.
I'm sorry. My name's Louise Hausen, and I live on Westwood across the, what was the golf course from where this development will be. So I have a couple of questions. First of all, I would want, I would ask that the developers take another look at the name for the for the project, which is Cove Pebble Beach. Couple of considerations. First of all, this project is not on Pebble Beach. And if you would want to call it something else, I just have some concerns because I think it just commercializes Pebble Beach even more. It brings more attention to Pebble Beach, lets people know where Pebble Beach is. There's already enough impact on Pebble Beach. So that is one concern, and I would ask them to just take another look at that name. I think it's changed. It's the first time I've seen Cove Pebble Beach on the name. Maybe I'm wrong. The other thing is the paths that they discussed going to Pebble Beach. So these are special access private paths that go to Pebble Beach just for the residents or the the folks that buy these homes. And again, I'm not, you know, I don't know that, you know, special access for these folks is, you know, so so how will they get there, right? So if it's a path that's coming from the furthest home, are they going to allow, be allowed to have golf carts? And drive golf carts down a very narrow road where we don't have any parking anyway? So I would, I would ask that somebody take a look at that. And Denise, I would ask that Friends of Pebble Beach take a hard look at any access to Pebble Beach that's given solely to and especially for the folks that that buy these places. You know, I don't, it's not that I have anything against people that are going to buy these places. I'm sure they'll be lovely people. But giving them special access when the public, the public access is is a little tricky as it is. And the impact on Pebble Beach continues. I don't know how many of you go there on any kind of a regular basis. But Pebble Beach is enormously impacted on a daily basis. And the people that are going to move in here will impact it even more. So I just think that there needs to be some consideration. That's a reason that Friends of Pebble Beach was put together to begin with. My other concern is the light pollution that will come from this development. So obviously, selfishly, I live across the golf course from it. I look out my back and it's pitch black and has been for a very long time. And that whole patch of of property there is dark. So I can look up and see the stars. So selfishly, I would like to at least, I'd like to see what the lighting plan is. I know it's very early on. I know it hasn't been approved yet, but the back, for the backs of those of those properties or even anywhere. And I would think that neighbors would also wonder, because right now, when Fuzzy and Suzie lived there, you know, it was, it was, there was no light pollution. It was dark and you could look up and see the stars and and that's important. It's more and more important to people all the time. So those are things that that I would just ask the the committee to consider. And I would, I would definitely ask the the developers to reconsider the name for this particular development. And I would, I just think that maybe it's a, you might want to come up with something, you know, something else. Thank you.
Okay, that is all I have for my list on people who wish to speak. I would like to open it up to anyone who is on the phone. I know it's difficult, so if you can just please state your name and then we can work one at a time. Is there anyone on the phone that wants to speak? Okay, it looks like that's it.
Okay, at 6:56, I will close the public hearing. And if there's anything that the Plank Commission would like to ask the Cranes or Jim or Anaj, please do so.
I do have a question, and before anyone on the Planning Commission says this isn't our place, this does have some deference into what we go forward with in in my point of view in regards to thinking ahead to the condominium declaration and the rules and regulations, et cetera. Are you going to allow any type of transient lodging here?
Jim, I think you're on mute.
I was on mute. Our intent was not for transient lodging, Eric.
To be defined as like not less than one month or three months, two weeks? Do you have any idea?
Unfortunately, we haven't gotten that far as to define it.
Thank you.
Is Marge talking to us and is she muted?
She's muted.
Hi Scott, okay.
Hi Marge, how are you?
I didn't realize I was still muted. Okay, I'm curious, is the house on the water that is in Grandma's cottage, is that, I want verification, that's the Crane's home?
Unit 18 is is the Crane's unit. You are correct.
Thank you.
You bet.
Nate, do you have any questions?
Just a question to anyone, to clarify my previous question to anyone. Health, safety, and welfare of the road has come up several times. And having driven that road repeatedly over the last, you know, as much as the rest of you, but working in the back at Highland Greens and working at the end and working in the middle. And I mean, seriously, that that is my question, is going to traffic count? As planning commissioners, we are, basically our only charge is health, safety, and welfare of the public. It has to do with zoning, it has to do with planning, but it also has to do with a lot of other things. Thank you for asking that question via text. I do appreciate it.
I'm sorry, go ahead Nate.
So since the last time we've had a conditional use, I believe state law has changed as to what can be considered. And I don't know that we've gone over that in detail since that changed. Does that, my memory correct on that?
I, I think when Act 67 went through, that might have been when Zeke was the administrator, and I believe that I did get a legal opinion on what that meant for the village and and shared it at that time with the Plank Commission. But I certainly can dig that out and and send it to all Plank Commission members on what exactly a conditional use means.
I can send that information to all the Plank Commission members. There's a pretty useful link that explains Act 67 regarding conditional use.
And one thing I do know is that a conditional use is a higher standard than a permitted use. Hence, we can ask for certain things, and the Cranes would have to agree to those items for this project to move forward. So if Bo, you can send that out tomorrow to everyone, so everybody can, you know, think about. um, and that's a really good point, Nate. So thank you for bringing that up. What that really means and what, um, what the village within realistic terms can ask for.
That, that's really on my mind's been through most of this. I was thinking about what, what, what is possible for us to do that's enforceable.
Okay. Scott, did you have anything?
I've got nothing Denise.
Okay. Um, a couple of things I would, um, like to clarify because it was in, um, many of the letters that I read and in some of the comments. And, um, the planning commission's role, does our duty, our obligation to the zoning code, we do not care about tax revenue for the village. That is not a concern of ours. And it has no bearing in, um, deciding, uh, what gets approved and what gets denied. It's, uh, usually based on the best use of, of the, the land. Uh, along with what Mary Kay said, the health, safety and welfare of the community as a whole. Um, I would probably also like to state, um, that it is not meant, been the main objective either of the village board. Um, due to the fact that we have bought so much waterfront property over the years. Uh, we do like to see development, um, in, uh, our downtown area where things are supposed to be, uh, more dense. So I just wanted to clarify that. There are, I know I stated that, um, there are, that we are going to think about all of this and review Act sixty-seven and, uh, talk about the conditions that we are, uh, interested in placing on, on, um, this project next month. Uh, there are a couple of things that I would like to throw out right now. Um, so that, um, the cranes and, uh, Delires can, uh, think about this. As I stated already, um, that, uh, I would like to have, um, no blasting as a condition. I would also like to, um, not have Pebble Beach in the name of the project. I also spoke to, um, our fire chief and it is his recommendation that this project, um, the sewer and water be looped. That's something else that I'm looking for. I would, um, also like to see, um, I believe our sign code allows a maximum of a twenty-four square foot sign uh, in the village. And I would like to have, um, a plaque of that size of representing, uh, Little Sister Resort that was there for a hundred years. And give a history of that property and photos similar to, uh, some of the kiosks that are throughout, uh, the county for the scenic byways. So that others who come in the future will know what was there and how important that settlement was to the village. Um, I would also, uh, put a condition on that there are no transient rentals, no Airbnb, no VRBO. Not for a day, not for a week, not for a month. If they want this residential, then it's residential. And, um, I would, there's a section in the zoning code that, um, talks about tree cutting regulations and especially on shoreland. And so I would like to see a tree cutting plan for the waterfront where the crane's personal home is going to go. Um, we do have criteria that limits how much can be removed. Um, and for the Delires group, that is, uh, section one thousand tree cutting regulations, um, and should be on page one thirty-three for you to review. So, um, those are the things that I know for sure right now, um, that I would like everybody else, including the planning commission members to think about, um, my thoughts on that. Um, I do have, um, a question for Delires and, um, because I believe NR one fifty-one is going to kick in and nowhere did I see any kind of, uh, retention pond. Is that going to be done at some point in time in the future with the civil engineering?
Yes, you are correct Denise. That, that will be designed with the civil engineering in the future. Um, we, we know that we will be responsible for our water retention.
Okay.
Would that change the density at all, do you think?
I, you know, I, I don't think, I, I don't believe so, and I, I don't want to make assumptions. However, we, we feel that the retention will probably end up in that, um, sort of island area left on the property. But tell us design, I can't say for sure. It's, uh, it, it's, it's a possibility, you know, and once it's designed, we'll understand the size and where the best location is.
And so again, to clarify, I think I asked this last month, um, that, um, the private walkway, once you cross Little Sister Road, that is going to be on, um, the current easement, um, on the property that the village owns, correct?
That is correct.
Come on.
Uh, water quality, um, is an issue, um, in all of Door County. Um, is there any kind of, uh, erosion control plan that is going to be implemented, um, with all of this building?
Yes, we would be submitting a plan, uh, for our erosion control.
Okay. And how does the, how does the planning commission and the village board, um, make sure that all of these homes are built and what is presented, actually comes to fruition? That, um, all this time and energy, I, I don't mean to be a negative Nellie, but the planning commission and the village board have been burned before. So what is the guarantee that you can make the planning commission and the village board? That this project is complete? How do you guarantee that?
You put on a sunset clause and levy fines. It has to be done by such and such a date. And if it is not, the developers are taxed in lieu and or other remedies as loud as determined by Mr. Nesbit.
Okay, well, sometimes that can only get you so far. And according to state statutes, the fines are, are already determined in which we can only, charge up to. And if we would do that, we would have to go to court. And most of the time that that happens, the, in the past, the judge has thrown out, let's say this went on for months. And so we're charging two hundred and fifty dollars a day, you know, for two and a half months. And the judge throws out everything but a week, but yet the crane's still got to build their home, but nothing else happened. So I don't totally trust the court system to guarantee that this will happen. Jim, do you have any ideas? Or you want to think chew on that one?
I think I'd like to chew on that a little bit.
Okay.
I, I mean, I agree, it needs to be a win-win for everyone. And that's certainly the intent.
Okay. Um, on page eighteen of the zoning code. And it's under the R two multifamily residence district. Um, it talks about the total of the floor area on all floors of the principal residential building. So that would mean all buildings and all accessory buildings, including the required parking, driveways and sidewalks shall not exceed forty percent of the lot area and the balance shall be left as open space. And that was ordinance number two zero three zero nine eleven twelve. And so I guess I would like to get, um, have you talked to Bo about that? Or read it for yourself in the code, um, and get that calculation from you. To make sure that that criteria is being met. I know that you talked in your presentation that there would be seventy-one percent open space. But that does not follow this criteria. So it's all the floors, each building, and then all the impervious surface, et cetera.
Okay, that's something we'll have to revisit.
Sure. Um, I am concerned, uh, also as a couple people, um, stated, I think one in a letter, uh, one who spoke that you are not providing any water access to the property, except for the path and a small storage of kayaks. Um, so basically you would, you would be using Pebble Beach as the waterfront access for your seventeen homeowners. Cause the cranes would have their own. I'm not necessarily, I don't feel good about that at all. I don't know how the rest of planning commission feels. It's bugged me right from the beginning. So I, um, I think that's something that maybe, um, you guys can have a conversation about.
Okay. What, one of our thoughts on this, uh, uh, initially, and you know, I can understand both points of view. However, uh, limiting some of the harbor access, you know, if we, if, if we allowed, say, a boat slipper access for all of residents, it's just gonna, again, it's going to create additional traffic. So our, our whole theme was to keep it as, as quiet as possible.
I'm just talking about accessing, accessing the water. It, not, not even about, uh, boats or anything else like that. Just being able to utilize the waterfront if it's, you know, one condo plot, uh, kind of going back to what, uh, Nissa Norton said. You know, you're not providing anything. It's one condo plat, but you're using Pebble Beach as a, as private waterfront for your seventeen homeowners. No, just think that should be thought about long and hard.
Okay.
So I think those were, um, all of my questions at this point in time. Anybody else think of anything else?
You covered it Denise.
Go ahead Marge.
Mary Kay?
Oh. You just have to remember in regard to any condominium development, and I actually tried to drive a few of them over the past month that are on similar acreage, but they, they would be higher density. So it's hard to say. I love the buildings. I love the designs. They are just beautiful. But you have to remember that even if you remove the transient use, which is what I am very fearful of, you still have caretakers, groundskeepers, cleaning crews, UPS, FedEx. You've got a lot of traffic on that road with the density that it has going into a small space. Um, it's, you know, we talked at previous meetings about visually seeing semis having to back up and wait for traffic and everything. It's just, um, I, I don't, I, I, I think it's a wonderful idea to, to have the plans and the specs that they have. I just still think that the density is a bit too high for that specific area. And that, for that specific site, I, I'll be honest. That, that would be my only comment. Otherwise, you know, I, I believe that everything that you brought up is something that I agree with. Is it a question? Yes. Is it a question that I can vote right now with my conscience that this should go forward? I don't know.
Well, and I did bring up the twenty thousand square feet, um, last month. And, um, I think Lance Crane, um, pushed back on that, um, with my reading of, of the zoning code. Um, we did hear it, um, periodically, um, tonight. Um, I don't know if, um, as I think about this, uh, or anybody else on the planning commission, if we would make that a condition moving forward. Or if there is, as somebody stated, I think in one of the letters, if there's, um, a happy medium somewhere, and I think they suggested the fifteen to seventeen thousand square feet. I don't know what that means. You know, if two buildings go away, but if you, and, and what I plan on doing is, um, using the county's, uh, GIS web mapping and looking at the parcel, the other parcels um, that people own down the Little Sister Road, who I believe all said that they were in favor of this project. And looking at the size of those lots for single family homes. Um, so I may come up with, you know, um, something different, uh, than the twenty thousand square feet. Certainly it wouldn't be over that. But that is some research that, um, I plan on doing. And because it was also brought up, um, by a few people during the public hearing. Okay. If nobody has anything else, I think we're going to move on to item three. Thank you, uh, Jim and Anaj. We'll talk to you soon, if not before next month.
Sounds great. I appreciate everyone's time and consideration. Thank you.
Very much.
Denise, do you want a motion that it's going to be basically moved to the next meeting? Or not?
No, no, it's just the process.
Okay.
Um, I need to grab another soda, cause I've talked too much. So could we just take a, a three minute break? You know, while I go do that before we move on to item number three?
Sure, fine.
Pardon the clock, three minutes.